I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This meeting is going to be held via Zoom. And let's just jump right in and take roll. Did Michelle end up?
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, okay, Thomas Fitting?
Yeah, I'm here.
Richard Gordon?
I'm here.
Nicole Davidson?
Here.
Mary Salvatore?
Here.
And Kirk Scott? I'm here. And, okay, so, just a couple of reminders here. Everybody who's on the commission here will remain unmuted. And of course, we can hear everything that's going on around you. If you're not planning on speaking, if you could mute your microphone, that would be fine. Let's see, as required by executive order, everybody is required to state their name and where they are from prior to speaking. Members and alternates for all motions, if we could make sure that we state our name for the record when, when making the motions. And, let's see.
You can probably skip the rest.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, so let's jump right into item number two, subdivisions and resubdivisions. This is an application for, of Carol York owner. Application for a one lot re-subdivision. I'm sorry, one lot subdivision of approximately 1.4 acres of land zoned R12. In a request from waivers, section seven dash two dash one, six dash twelve dash two, six dash eight, five dash two dash two, CII, and five dash six on property located at 92 Old Black Point Road. Assessors map, 8.3 lot 132. And I believe, Mr. Gashel, you have some things to read into the record?
Oh, well, at the, upon the close of the hearing, the commission had asked that I draft a memo and a resolution. So I do that, I did, went ahead and did that. You have that hopefully in front of you. I can certainly read it and all the findings. But in regards to that memorandum, the plan references, the date is September 25th, 2020, revised through November 25th, 2020. Prepared by Robert Fanner, P E L S, of Robert Fanner and Associates, PC engineers and land surveyors. My findings, I can certainly go through all of them. Obviously, we start out with having and the, holding the public hearing on November 11th, 2020. And we closed it December 1st of 2020. Where we also commenced the public hearing and reviewed it. We received testimony from the applicant and other professionals. The applicant's representatives and the public. Again, whereas the parcel of land constituting the property subject to the application is zoned R12 residential and the properties abutting the site to the north and south are zoned R12 residential. The abutting properties to the east are split by the R12 and RU40 zoning districts. And to the west opposite Old Black Point Road, the properties are zoned TD Title Marsh. And where the subdivision is found to meet the requirements of the Eastline subdivision regulations and the Eastline plan of conservation and development, as demonstrated by the following in terms of section three dash four, the plan of development. So proposed subdivision is located completely within an R12 zoning district adjacent to existing residential lot zoned R12. The proposed subdivision continues to follow the pattern of development characteristic of the existing residential development. As such, the proposed subdivision conforms with the comprehensive plan of development for the town of Eastlime as adopted by the Eastline Planning Commission. Section dash five dash four sanitation report. As indicated in exhibit Q, correspondence from Brad Cargill, a utilities engineer dated December 1st, 2020. Indicates the proposed lots are able to be served by municipal sewer. As section five dash five, the water supply report as indicated in exhibit Q again. Correspondence from Brad Cargill, the utilities engineer dated December 1st, 2020. Indicates the proposed lots are able to be served by municipal water. Section five dash two dash two E and six dash eight stormwater management plan. As indicated by exhibit K, the memo from Victor Benny, P E Town Engineer dated November 9th, 2020. Indicates that the drainage summary meets the overall intent of section six dash eight of the Eastline subdivision regulations. And the proposed site development will not adversely affect the water quality of downstream water features or exacerbate any downstream flooding. Section five dash two dash two G erosion and sedimentation control plan as indicated by exhibit K memo again from Victor Benny, P E Town Engineer dated November 9th, 2020. The proposed plan was updated to contain generalized erosion sedimentation control notes. As such, the appropriate notes, details and provisions regarding erosion control measures adequate to control accelerated erosion and sedimentation and reduce the danger from stormwater runoff on the proposed site have been incorporated into the proposed plan. Therefore, the planning commission may hereby certify that the soil erosion and sedimentation control plan complies with the requirements and objectives of this subdivision regulation. Section five dash six, the pesticide report, as evidenced by the applicant's testimony during public hearing, there have been no known regular applications of pesticides on the subject site currently or historically. In addition, the site is currently occupied by a single family dwelling. Section five dash eight, the archaeological survey, as evidenced by exhibit C is a letter from Dr. Sarah P. Sportman, PhD, state archaeologist to Ms. Carol York dated October 13th, 2020. Which indicates that due to shallow soils and relatively low archaeological sensitivity of the site, the proposed subdivision and development is unlikely to impact buried archaeological resources. And the offices of state archaeology, archaeologists determined that it is not necessary to conduct an additional archaeological survey prior to development. Section six dash two lot design specifications. The proposed subdivision complies with all applicable zoning regulations for the purposes of the subdivision of land as evidenced by exhibit E correspondence from William Mulholland zoning official dated October 29th, 2020.
Uh-oh.
Looks like we might have lost him.
Okay. All right. I can see a screen scrolling up.
Yeah, I moved it because this is where we left off was the section six dash seven open spaces. I don't know, maybe Michelle, you want to jump in and read?
Sure, as demonstrated by exhibit A, the applicant initially requested a waiver from section seven dash two dash one of the subdivision regulations as the subdivision is less than four lots and involves less than 10 acres of land, which any proposed open space would be isolated and small in this size, thus limiting usable open space area. Subsequently, as demonstrated by exhibit J, the revised subdivision plan entitled subdivision prepared for Carol York location 92 Old Black Point. The revised plan did propose a 31-foot wide conservation easement of approximately 6,202 square feet, which is .14 acres that extends north to south along the rear property line to be dedicated as open space. So that waiver is no longer requested. Section six dash nine requirements regarding flooding. As indicated in exhibit K, the memo from Victor Benny, P E Town Engineer dated November 9th, 2020. Indicates that the drainage summary meets the overall intent of section six dash eight of the Eastline subdivision regulations. And the proposed site development will not adversely affect the water quality of downstream water features or exacerbate any downstream flooding. So those are the findings. And then I believe the next page kind of goes through rationale for the recommendation on, on a vote. Do we need to pause here?
Gary, is that back?
Questions? Okay, great.
Gary, are you there?
Yeah, I'm back, sorry, my computer crashed. On my phone. So, yes, the next page, there was one more finding. As demonstrated by exhibit A, the application included a written request for waivers from section seven dash two dash one open space, six dash 12 dash 12 sidewalks, six dash eight dash seven exemptions, a stormwater exemption. Section five dash two dash two, CII preliminary resource plan and section five dash six, the pesticide report. All pursuant to section four dash 12 of the Eastline subdivision regulations. And obviously, as you know, when granting a waiver, the commission has to weigh that request against a set of criteria as outlined in the memo below. I did my best for you, this might be a good place for the commission to have some discussion. Again, in terms of criteria, number one, yes, the request was provided in writing. Number two, the property for which the waiver is sought is affected by conditions which affect the property and are not generally applicable to other land in the area. My finding here was as demonstrated by exhibit J, the existing parcel benefits from an existing 50-foot wide access and utility easement along the southerly property, property line, which allows for the utilities and the proposed drive to be located within versus the 25-foot right-of-way provided over parcel A, which was approved by the zoning commission. So that, that was kind of the only unique thing about this property that I kind of noted in terms of the rest in the area. It had a, just the additional easement there for access and utilities. Three, the physical features of the property or its location cause exceptional difficulty on our unusual hardship in meeting the requirements of the regulation. Again, as just demonstrated by exhibit A, the application written waiver. And exhibit J, the proposed subdivision plan, the location of the existing parcel is such that there are no existing sidewalks within a mile or more of the subject site. The site contains little to no, to no land that has not already been developed and or cleared by the existing dwelling, nor there has there ever been any evidence of pesticide use on the site. Criteria four, the granting of the waiver will not have a significantly adverse effect upon adjacent property, the environment, or the public health and safety. As demonstrated by exhibit N, the CAM application, there are no adverse impacts to any coastal resources. As demonstrated by exhibit K, memorandum from Victor Benny, P E Town Engineer indicates that the drainage summary meets the overall intent of section six dash eight of the Eastline subdivision regulations and the proposed site development will not adversely affect the water quality of downstream water features or exacerbate any downstream flooding. In addition, as demonstrated by exhibit J, the proposed subdivision plan proposes to create only one additional building lot versus three or more as allowed by the underlying zoning district. Thus, reducing the density which helps to maintain existing views of Long Island Sound also reduces the potential environmental impact from a more intense development. As such, the granting of the requested waivers would not have a significantly adverse effect upon adjacent property, the environment, or the public health and safety. And five, the granting of the waiver would not be in conflict with the plan of conservation and development. As this is one of lots subdivision, what minimizes land disturbance and mitigates any potential adverse effect upon adjacent property, the environment, or the public health and safety. The proposed subdivision as demonstrated by the record before the commission is consistent with the Eastline 2020 plan of conservation and development, as it will reduce the land disturbance and mitigates any adverse impacts from stormwater runoff. And whereas pursuant to section four dash five dash four, the subdivision regulations, the commission after the public hearing, if any, shall give approval to the application if it finds that the application plans and documents conform to the requirements of these regulations. Such approval shall be conditioned upon presentation of suitable easements and deeds as applicable as specified in section 10 of the regulations. And shall be conditioned upon the completion of all required subdivision improvements. In granting approval, the commission may attach such conditions that it deems necessary to modify the subdivision map plans or documents and to preserve the purpose and intent of these regulations. As such, I offer the following resolution. There, you'll see there's two. Because there's a request for a waiver, you have to first act on the waiver request and either deny or grant it. And then second, make a second motion to either approve or deny the subdivision with or without conditions. You'll note in that motion, there are four conditions that, that are stated there. Of note is one, an erosion sedimentation control bond and the amount of $3,000 be posted with the town. That's pursuant to the town engineer's recommendation. Obviously contacting the planning director prior to the construction to inspect E and S controls. They also have to obtain a right-of-way permit, file that with our Department of Public Works prior to start of any work. And all of that needs to be done again prior to work. So if anybody has any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's address the waivers then. Does, do any of the members of the commission have any questions or concerns about the waivers? That they'd like to bring up for discussion? I'm sorry, go ahead, Rich. Was I, somebody, somebody said something?
Oh, no.
Okay, I think, I think I'm comfortable with the sidewalk ones for sure. And I, we did waive the one for the open space, so that's good.
Well, we didn't, we don't need to waive it anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I meant to say.
Just to be clear for the record.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, that was, I said the wrong thing. Okay, so it sounds like everybody's comfortable with the waivers. Do we want to bring a motion to the table? Does anyone feel like bringing a motion to the table?
Sure. Oh, go for it, Rich.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Michelle. I submit a motion to, I move to grant the, a motion to grant the applicant's request for a waiver from section seven dash two dash one, section six dash 12, section six dash eight dash seven, and section five two dash two, CII, and section five six of the Eastline subdivision regulations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gordon. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, and that was?
Mary.
Mary, thank you. Any discussion, further discussion? Okay, so let's, let's move to vote. I'm just going to do a roll call vote. Michelle Williams?
Aye.
Thomas Fitting?
Aye.
Richard Gordon?
Aye.
Nicole Davidson?
Aye.
Mary Salvatore?
Aye.
Kirk Scott?
Aye.
Let the record show, six zero zero, and motion passes for the waivers. Okay, so on to the actual application. So, we read the conditions of the waiver. I'm sorry, the conditions of the subdivision application. We need to read the rest of this after that?
You, you can, basically, that's just some fancy language there that says that the approval is specific to the subdivision, subdivision plan submitted. The application has to be fulfilled just as it's been approved, sorry, approved, just as it's proposed and approved. And any change to that, they need to obtain another approval coming back to the commission.
Okay, does, do any of the members of the commission have any other concerns or comments that they'd like to bring to the table regarding the application? Okay. I think I'm comfortable with it. I am, the, the, the land layout looks like that parcel matches a lot of the properties that are in the area. And it didn't, and it, and it seemed like the house itself, or the, the subdivision was only going to support one lot, or one, yeah, one lot, which would mean one house, which kind of is fitting with the area. Those are my only thoughts. If anyone else has any other thoughts they'd like to share. Okay, hearing, hearing no other thoughts. I'm going to call for a motion. Does anyone care to make, bring a motion to the table regarding this application?
So hard on Zoom.
I know, right?
I will move to approve the application via the language provided in Gary's memo to the commission in lieu of reading it aloud again here. We can, we can see it.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second, Nicole Davidson.
Thank you, Nicole. Any further discussion? Okay, with, with no further discussion, I think we can go ahead and move to a vote. And again, roll call, Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Fitting? That was an I?
Yeah, sorry, I, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was disconnected for a second. Could Michelle possibly repeat what she's, I was disconnected for a split second, so.
Oh, sure. The motion, go ahead, Michelle.
They failed to hear all things.
Okay, so the motion was, the motion that we were voting on was a motion to approve based on the language that was read into the record and the language of the memo as presented by Mr. Gashel. And we were, we were through the vote. Michelle Williams was an I, Tom Fitting was I. And we were on you, Mr. Gordon?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Davidson?
Aye.
Ms. Salvatore?
Aye.
And Kirk Scott?
Aye.
Let the record show that the application for the lot subdivision is approved per the motion and vote. Let the record show it was six zero zero. So, thank you, everyone, for that. So that brings us to the second part of our meeting tonight. You get my?
Do we have to adjourn this?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We should adjourn.
Yeah, we should, okay, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the first half or the first meeting.
Motion to adjourn meeting, Nicole Davidson.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay.
Mary Salvatore.
Thank you, Mary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go to a vote. Michelle Williams?
Aye.
Tom Fitting?
Aye.
Richard Gordon? I think that was an I.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Nicole Davidson?
Aye.
Mary Salvatore?
Aye.
And Kirk Scott?
Aye.
Let the record show six zero zero, meeting adjourned, or meeting one. And we are on to meeting two. So I'm going to just call meeting two to order at 7:24. And let's jump right in. We are still in a public hearing. This is a continuation of the application of Kristen T. Clark, P E for English Harbor Asset Management LLC owner. Application for, for lots of division of a park of approximately 3.8 acres of land zoned RU40 located at 20 and 24 Upper Kensington Drive, Eastlime Assessors Map. 40.0 lots 22 and 23. And Mr. Gashel, I think you have some new exhibits?
Gary, you're muted.
All right, yeah, we had several new exhibits entered into the record. I will note that they came in after the 24-hour deadline that was afforded by the executive orders. So with that, the applicant submits those at his own risk in the event of an appeal. I will note that, that with those exhibits included was a revised set of plans. It also includes email correspondence between the Ledgely Health District and the applicant and the applicant's engineer, land surveyor, remember, as well as the, the applicant's attorney. At the end of the day, the correspondence indicates that Ledgely, Miss Danielle Holmes, registered sanitarian, has approved the lots for septic. So in that regard, there's no formal written memorandum yet. I believe that will be forthcoming. But with that said, we at least have those items in the record. I believe Mr. Gary is here this evening. He can speak to those three items that were added. If you have any specific questions for him.
I just want to be clear, Gary, too. The exhibit AAA, which was the set of plans, was actually received within the 24-hour window. What we hadn't included on the website was just a narrative from Kristen Clark to Danielle that went with that site plan. I did attach it today. They had been going back and forth so much, there was kind of, kind of some confusion about what stuff we should be posting and what stuff we shouldn't be posting. So as, as far as I can tell, the narrative and the site plan were received within 24 hours. The site plan was definitely up there 24 hours ahead of time. The new document that came in today would be the email from Danielle that we got late this afternoon, saying that she was approving it, but that she hadn't had time to write the quote-unquote official letter.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you, Gary, thank you, Jen. I think with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Garrity for opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and Ms. Lindo is correct, the AAA exhibit is the map that, or plans that went to Ledgely that's got the nod of approval today. The correspondence, the email, we were just making sure that the technical comments between Ms. Clark, RP, and Ms., and Ms. Holmes were part of the record. It's, it's not absolute that it needs to be in there, but I think it all made it before the 24-hour period. But if not, we submitted that court, that, that series of correspondence today. With, with that said, I think if I can just read, so the email that Ms. Holmes sent today is all, no time to write a formal plan review, but recognizing the deadline of today for common, please accept this correspondence. I'm advising approval of the site suitability based on the proposed plans with the latest revision 12920. This applies to all three lots. So, and that was at about 2:32 this afternoon. So it, so at this point in time, what's been, the obvious thing that's been holding us up is the septic approvals, we, we received the approval. I assume she'll submit a final formal approval post-closing, but that would be administrative task from staff. So that should be able to be received by the commission without any issue. Unless the commission has any additional comments or questions from me. I, I think we are, are there at this point. Probably the only thing taking longer to get, get resolved will be COVID. But it looks like this application would be completed at this point in time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garrity. And given that the public hearing is still open, I think we can open the floor up for questions from the commission. Does anyone on the commission have any further questions or comments or need more information?
I do. I would just love, Paul, if you could quickly walk us through the changes on the actual plan. If we were to pull the, the plan up on the screen share. What's new in 129 versus what we last looked at? I, I think that I know, but I'd like to go over it together.
Okay, so so the, the new plan, I did bring the emails from Danielle down, but she, on the plan for lot, just get the lot straight here, lot 23. We located the primary septic area. We, we moved it, we did some additional testing last week. And, and had adjusted that boundary line to keep the primary septic area off. And I know you probably can't see me holding, what I'm holding or pointing to here on the map. But so on, on lot 23, we reconfigured that to have the primary septic area above the reserve area. That was one of the comments that she had that it had been reversed or, or previously had been reversed with the primary area below the reserve area. So it was down gradient. We changed that. And based on the system that we're using, she allowed us to shrink the number of galleys that we would have on that. On lot 21, we moved the septic to the front of the house. It's, it's down gradient. One of the other items that she had requested previously, and I'll, I'll read the letter we submitted in response, because that might be easier, is for lot 19, it was a B100 application. We added a measurement from the proposed well location to the house to demonstrate that it's, the well location is less than 25 feet from the proposed house, or is, excuse me, greater than 25 feet from the
from the proposed house. We also relocated the well on the property so that it was completely within the property line. Previously, there had been overlapping arcs with the abutting property. We added the location of the proposed utility trench on there, which Ms. Holmes had asked for, and they added effective leaching calculations for that lot as well. For lot 21, and this is where I was talking about, and 23, the the areas, the primary and the reserve were reversed to address comments that Ms. Holmes had. On that, we relocated the rear property line of lot 21, which is a lot farthest to the east on there in order to create a greater distance between the leaching field and the budding property on that. We added, again, the location of the utility trench for this property. We relocated the proposed well and revised the well arc again so that those two well arcs didn't overlap, and they add the effective leaching area information to the page six of the plans. For lot 23, again, because we relocated the boundary line on lot 21, it ended up relocating the boundary line on lot 23, which allowed us to keep the septic system on lot 23 within the area of a previously approved septic system from when this was approved back in Phase 3. That septic system was fairly large, because at the time, we didn't have the technology for it. And Ms. Holmes and Ms. Clark and the correspondence back and forth over the last two days, Ms. Holmes indicated that she would be agreeable to reducing the septic area and the number of trenches or galleys that were in there, so that we didn't encompass as much area, given the new design that we were using. We did a couple of additional test holes and perpulation tests. We indicated previously that on lot 23, because that was a previously approved septic area, and there were no MLS calculations required back in the Phase 3 approval, because there's no intervening ledge on the property that they weren't required, and she agreed with that at this point. That had been a question that she had initially on that. I think that covers the majority of the changes that were on there. Most of them were reasonably straightforward changes to that.
Thank you.
Any other commission members have any questions about this? Gary, have you had a chance to review the latest version of this plot or this layout and plan? And has the town engineer, and this has had full review by by everybody, including Danielle Holmes, right?
Yeah. I know Danielle has looked at it. I've looked at it. I don't know necessarily that Victor Benny has had a chance to review it in its entirety. So that said, I believe his memo stands as it regard, regarding the plan, the previous iteration. I don't necessarily see a significant change between this one and that one. I would ask Mr. Garrity regarding the open space, there was a sliver of land that one of the iterations had, and it doesn't appear to be there anymore. It looks like they've encompassed it into that third lot.
Correct. Yes, so if we're looking at, and I don't know if you can see my, if we're looking at the map that Jen has up on the screen, where you see the ledge to the right, there was an area of approximately 6/10ths of an acre that was gonna be, it started out originally as four lots, but one of the four lots was gonna be open space. We were demonstrating that a house could be built on it for purposes of being able to convey it and appraising it so that, for purposes of the conveyance and conservation easements. As we made some changes to the plans as we went forward, we eliminated one of the lots, and then as we went, and we were gonna leave about 6/10ths of an acre to go to the open space, but as we moved the septic systems around in order to accommodate comments from Ledge Light, we essentially eliminated the open space completely, because it really didn't make much sense as we were utilizing more of that area. So it's down to three lots, two lots essentially lot-line revisions, and one creating new, one new additional lot. That answers your question, Gary.
Yes, thank you.
Gary, can I ask an administrative-type question here?
Yes.
With this, I understand that the two existing lots were already approved and subject to the larger open space agreement for the neighborhood. Given the, you know, the discussion at our previous meeting, does this require us to waive an open space requirement for this additional one lot? I know that it's, does it meet the acreage requirements or lot requirements, but do we still need to address that in our discussion?
I believe that you still do need to address it, and I believe Mr. Gary has some rebuttal, maybe?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've met the 40, for purposes of this subdivision, we've met the 40% requirement already. The other issue is that, as you may recall, and I know it's been a while, we had asked the commission to agree to sign the covenant to the open space on the properties to the Eastline Land Trust. In addition, the land behind this, which encompasses 36 acres, is being donated, and we're hoping to close next week on that. I received an email from the DEEP that check was being issued for that, so that the land trust would have the funding, and we'd be looking at this piece, since it's all part of the same parcel, as satisfying the open space requirement. So there's...
Yeah, I understand that piece. I just wanted to have a better understanding of how it applies to our discussion this evening for this particular application.
Are you clear, or do you still need clarification?
I'm, I'm clear.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask one more time, any of the other commission members looking to have any clarification or have questions about this? Okay, so hearing none, I'm gonna turn, open it up to comment from the public.
I only have one member of the public here, and that is Barbara Johnson. Barbara, if you want to unmute, I know it's gonna take a minute, because she's on the phone.
Thank you very much, Jen.
Yep.
And everybody there on the commission. I appreciate all the work that's been put into this, believe me. But I would like to know from the attorney, what is the end result of the acreage that will be for a conservation easement? The total?
Okay, so we have a question about the total acreage from the conservation easement. That was, that was for a different application, or a different... So this, this application doesn't have any open space requirement. I think we satisfied that, didn't we? Mr. Gashell, can you clarify that?
Yeah, I believe the applicant is attesting that the open space allocation was already given with the previous subdivision?
Correct.
And then in addition, while the 39 acres behind this isn't necessarily part of this subdivision, it's in the works of already being conveyed as open space. So it would have been part of the subdivision and conveyed, but for whatever reason, timing, the parcels were actually separate. It's kind of a unique situation.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
So it's been a phase subdivision, and in Phase 4, we added an additional 10 acres of open space, but now, as part of this, hopefully, last phase here, this additional land, so I look at, you know, it's a small, we're resubdividing one, we're creating an extra lot on this, but it's all part of a phase subdivision. So the land behind this 36 acres that's going to the land trust shortly is included. I think to answer the question, we're in excess of 80 acres of open space right now on this project.
And will it be addressed as a conservation easement?
Eastline Land Trust is gonna own all of it. So the town had a conservation easement on approximately 40 acres. The town has agreed to assign that conservation easement to the Eastline Land Trust. The land that we are conveying and hope to close on next week is going to be conveyed outright to the Eastline Land Trust.
And can you explain what a funding is from DEEP? I'm not familiar with any part of that.
So DEEP...
What is that funding?
DEEP has open space acquisition grants that they give to land organizations. The land trust had applied for an acquisition grant and was successful in getting it, so they're gonna purchase the property.
Do you have an amount on that?
I think it is $362,000.
For the land trust?
That goes to the land trust, correct.
And who's this speaking?
Paul Garrity.
Gary? Oh, attorney?
Yes.
And this will be going to the Eastline Land Trust?
The land will, yes.
The land will. And how many acres is it again? Sorry?
36.
36. And what is the 40?
There is, there is land that, and I'm not entirely familiar with that, because I wasn't involved in that part of the subdivision, one of the earlier phases that was given as open space.
To the land trust also, am I right? Or understanding it right, so we don't go through a sale again like this?
Not sure I follow the question, but...
Barbara, are these questions relative to this subdivision, or are they relative to something else?
I believe it would be the whole subdivision, that this must be the close of it unless there's another phase. Is there that, again, I don't know? It seems to have gone through phases.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, maybe I could maybe further explain.
Yeah, please, please do.
Nottingham Hills subdivision was a phase subdivision. So far, it's underwent four different phases, and along that, during that time, the applicant, as part of each phase, has dedicated open space as required by our subdivision regs. And so, and under Connecticut law, you can't have double jeopardy. So if they already allocate the open space, and it's sufficient for meeting the regulations, you can't necessarily require an applicant to provide more. Now, our regulations have changed to create what we call the Conservation Design Development District, in which you have to provide additional open space to benefit from the flexibility. This being a cluster subdivision initially, I believe it can be looked at slightly differently, like it's very similar to a CDD, but looking at the overall open space that's been dedicated to the town, well over 40 acres. And now, they're taking another 36 acres and dedicating it again to open space. So I think all in all, the intent has been met, that the open space allocation has been provided along with the division of land. Does that make sense, Barbara?
Halfway, Gary. I don't understand where the 362,000 goes then.
The Eastline Land, the Eastline Land Trust made an application to the Connecticut DEEP for open space and watershed acquisition grant, and they were awarded 326,000 to put toward the 39 acres that's gonna be placed into open space.
So they're giving it to the town, in other words, it sounds like?
No, the 39 acres behind the proposed subdivision is gonna be purchased by the land trust. The remaining open space that has, if you will, has already been allocated, deeded to the town.
Oh, okay, so in other words, the sale of this property is taking or receiving the 362,000 or a part of it, whatever part, is that the way I'm understanding it?
Well, the sale of the 39 acres, which is actually subject to the application.
That we're speaking about tonight?
Correct.
Is gonna be paying the money from the DEEP to have this acreage go to the land trust?
Correct.
And the other acreage that was set aside years ago is 36, 36 acres, basically? So it would make a total about approximately 76, give or take, acres?
Plus, I think that brings it up close to 80. I think in totality, there's more acreage than that. I have a breakdown in the office of all the open space allocations with this subdivision and the Darrell's Ridge subdivision, because they abutted the same lands.
Well, that was the part that confused me today, reading some of the materials, was where did the Darrell subdivision come in? But I know they're adjoining or close to each other, but it's Aunt's, somebody's highway there. Is that included in what the town already received?
Yes, the Darrell Pond property back, remember, if you remember, we purchased the Darrell Pond property for $4 million?
Oh, I do, Gary. It goes way back. I'm trying to...
Right, so Aunt Ruth's Turnpike runs along that property, and some of the property that has already been dedicated is open space by the developer. Or, I shouldn't say developer, by the previous developer.
Okay.
All right, so thank you for the questions. Thank you for the attention to this. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to address the commission tonight?
I don't have any other members of the public present.
Okay. So I think everybody's had a chance to ask their questions and bring new information to our attention. So for final comments, Mr. Garrity, do you have anything that you would like to add in closing?
Just to thank you all, I know it's been a long, arduous process, and I appreciate all the commission members' time and effort on this, so thank you.
Great, yeah, thank you. We appreciate that, too. Mr. Gashell, do you have any further comments to close?
I have none at this time.
Okay. I think that, given that we have no further questions and nobody else is looking to address the commission, I think that I would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
I submit a motion to close the public hearing. Richard Gordon?
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Do I hear a second?
A second motion.
Mr. Fitting, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's move to a vote. Michelle Williams?
Aye.
Thomas Fitting?
Aye.
Richard Gordon?
Aye.
Nicole Davidson?
Aye.
Mary Salvatore?
Aye.
Kirk Scott?
Aye.
Let the record show that we are closing the public hearing at 7:50. So with that, I think I would like to, okay, so that brings us to subdivision, three subdivisions, the application of Kristen T. Clark, P.E. for English Harbor Asset Management, LLC, owner, application for four-lot subdivision, approximately 3.8 acres of land zoned RU-40, located at 22 and 24 Upper Kensington Drive, East Line. So we have 65 days to make a decision on this. I feel that at this time, it would be a good opportunity to let town staff... a good opportunity to let town staff review everything and draft some, draft some potential motions and collect whatever artifacts that we might have into final evidence. And so I'm going to, I'm going to ask town staff to do that.
Thank you. I would just ask, does the commission have any thoughts, initial concerns that they may want to point out to me? I can maybe address. If not, I'll just go ahead and draft up a memorandum, you know, like I typically do. I would note, while there was material that was submitted after the 24-hour requirement per the executive orders, that said, being that the application, in my opinion, deemed fully complete, we waited for that, obviously. I would think that if the commission were to find the application incomplete, the application, the applicant would just turn around and resubmit the same plan that was already compliant. So I think in terms of going down that road, it would be a bit of a mute point. I think the only thing that really the commission needs to be aware of is that the applicant runs the risk of on an appeal. If someone were to appeal, that that information came in late. But aside from that, that's the only comment that I would have at this point, unless you have any specifics you want me to consider.
I don't have anything other than what I know that you already do as far as, you know, tending to the details, make sure and all the paperwork is correct and all that. I'm sure you're going to do that anyway.
It would, we go through each regulation and draft to find it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. Which brings us, I think we can move on to item four, municipal referrals. We have a referral from the Old Line, proposed draft for their 2020 P O C D for our comment and recommendation. Does anyone care to start any sort of discussion on this? Has anyone had a chance to read it?
It was fun reading for me.
I bet.
They had some cool stuff in there, I thought. I mean, very short, and there were some things that weren't really, you know, addressed in the plan at all. But they had some interesting ideas on sewer avoidance that I thought, you know, Eastline should kind of keep abreast of, knowing the situation that we're in as well and some tactics that they're utilizing to try to use, have less sewer volume. I thought that was interesting. Their town budget, annual budget, does include an open space line. And they do have a specific open space commission outside of, it seems, natural resources, which I thought played into a lot of the things that we discussed in our plan. In fact, one of the things that they mentioned continuing to do, which it looks like they're doing already, was to identify town-owned parcels that do not, that they, that do not warrant open space protections. Selling those parcels to abutting owners and then using the proceeds from that sale to put into the open space fund. So kind of a way to do a land swap almost. I thought that was really interesting. And I think especially with all the shuffling with the public safety building that's going to happen in the next few years, that would be something, an idea that that Eastline could potentially look at as well in doing audits of land that we own. There was a lot of talk about filters for storm drains that I thought was interesting and in line with our plan. And overall, I thought, you know, it's very consistent with the issues that we're trying to address here. And I had no concerns about support of their plan.
Well, thank you for digging in and having a close look at that. Does anyone else have any ideas or thoughts about it?
I didn't see any glaring omissions when I went through it. It was interesting to read another P O C D and, you know, compared to ours. And, you know, I didn't see drafts, they pretty much covered all the, you know, the issues of the space, et cetera. You know, transportation, you know, issues with housing, that sort of thing. So, but it was a pretty solid job.
Do we feel like we want to give them any sort of feedback? I mean, what I'm hearing is like all positive comments so far, like.
I can certainly draft a letter to them indicating the same.
Yeah, yeah. If, yeah, if you would like to do that, that would be, that would be good. That would be a good, good way to get some collaboration with our neighbors there. You don't, you don't need us to make a motion or vote to do that, do you?
No, I would just do it on your behalf.
Yeah.
As there's a consensus of the commission.
Yeah, I think, I think it sounds like everybody has positive feedback and liked some of the ideas that were presented. So I think, I think that that's a good, thank you for taking that up as an action item there, Mr. Gashel. Okay, so that brings us to item five, which is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Oh, before we adjourn, just I have one thing to report. It's official. Thank you, Jen. The plan of development was accepted by OPM today. So, congrats.
Yes.
On it.
I just want to tell you all for the record, when I got that email, I did come out of my chair because I was that happy that it is over.
I have, I have visions of like a Super Bowl, you know, the end of the Super Bowl with confetti flying everywhere. So, yeah, that was good. Good job to everybody. And that definitely, you know, for, to town staff also for pushing it over the line there at the end. And for everybody else that was involved, too, that was, represents a lot of hard work and a lot of really good ideas. That's something that we should all celebrate, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? All right, I'm looking to hear a motion to adjourn.
I submit a motion to adjourn, Richard Gordon.
Michelle Williams quickly seconds that motion before somebody changes their mind.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. I'm going to move to vote. All right, let's. Michelle Williams.
Aye.
Thomas Fitting.
Aye.
Richard Gordon.
Aye.
Nicole Davidson.
Aye.
Mary Salvatore.
Aye.
Kirk Scott.
Aye.
Let the record show that 6:00, we are adjourned at 8 o'clock. Very good. Be safe, everybody. Have a great holiday season. I hope it's good and we'll all be.